Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay of Alodion Morse Stadium, Antay, Colorado. The acronym is AMPAC under Chief Judge of Constable Court. Today is Class 70. Class 70. Well, what did we learn in Class 69? Well, we learned a lot, right? We learned a lot about the fact that we're not Moors Americans. And why is that? It's because Moors American is not a name in any treaty or any constitution on planet Earth. However, the treaties say we're what? What is our political status in the treaty? We're Moors, we're Moroccans, we're also referred to as what? Moors Subjects. And what else are we referred to as having Moors Governments, right? This is what the proper status is of Moors. But you must also understand the geographical location of where the Moors are now claiming their domicile. Where's your permanent domicile? Well, it's in Morocco. What part of Morocco? Well, the west. We're in the west side of the empire, right? So what else did we learn in Class 69? Well, we were learning that the Fourteenth Amendment tried to omit the word "subject" out of their constitution, right? But yet, the colonists were perfectly aware they could not omit the word "subject" out of the treaties. Because treaties supreme law of the land, right? So since treaties supreme law of the land, the colonists could not omit the word "subject" out of the treaties. So therefore, treaties are still in force. So therefore, you must understand the legal personality classification of who the Moors are in the treaties. And who are we in a treaty? We are the sovereigns. We are the sovereigns in Morocco. But how do we proclaim ourselves as being the sovereigns? Well, we have to learn how to enact legislation. We have to learn how to return to Morocco in accordance with our own treaty provisions of the Treaty of Madrid, 1880. Article 15, paragraph 1 says we have to return to Morocco and consent. How do you consent? Well, you can't consent with just your mouth. You have to consent with a pen on an application and then renounce and reject any allegiance to the naturalized foreign country called the United States of America and the United States with a pen, right? To return to Morocco to your competent Moors State. And what makes you have a competent Moors State? Your competent constitution has been ratified, delegated, and in accordance to international law, right? These are some of the things that we learned in Class 69, right? There was a lot of information we went over. At the end of the day, what did we learn? What was the solution at the end of the day? The Moors not only have to enact a constitution, which is the first legislation, we have to return to Morocco once we enact that constitution. Then we have to have our three press of government. And through the three presses government, we enact legislation that gives the Constable Court an opportunity to send an order to the United States President's Office, right? The office of the president, right? We were learning about this. Where's that called? What is the United States statute called? What is that called? Sometimes we refer to what? Eight Stat, 484, 34 Stat, what? 2905, right? Coming on is 22 USC, 141. Sometime coming on is Title 22, Chapter 2, Section 141 to 143. They have all these different classifications. And at the end of the day, what did we learn about those classifications? That the United States, the President, has a pen in his hand. And he's been waiting to sign off on that bill that is not legislation yet. To enforce it in order to do what? Relinquish civil and criminal jurisdiction over each of the territories in Morocco. What do I mean by each territory? Well, all the Moors have to come back and enact their own constitution. That identifies your latitude, longitude of your state. So only your state can proclaim the UT Pasadena's jurisdiction of your state, right? So you're talking about according like AMPAC's constitution as an example. We talk about our dominions, right? So this is the UT Pasadena's jurisdiction of AMPAC. So when we send a Constable Court order to the President of the United States, we're proclaiming saying this jurisdiction, the United States can no longer have civil and criminal jurisdiction over this particular latitude, longitude. This has nothing to do with Utah. This has nothing to do with Wyoming. This has nothing to do with Texas. This has everything to do with AMPAC, Alodion Morse Stadium, Antay, Colorado, according to our constitution. So all the Moors have to follow suit. We all have to enact an organic constitution. And through that constitution, you can notify the United States International Organization to relinquish any limited civil and criminal jurisdiction that they have been gifted, they have been granted according to our Moors treaties. Now they have to relinquish it only by the competent authority of the Constable Court. That's the answer to the test, alright? Okay, so let's go ahead and get into it. Obviously, AMPAC's got their constitution up here. We just talked about the dominions. This is AMPAC's constitution. It talks about our latitude, longitude of our state, right? Every state will need to have their own seal, their own flag, right? Then you have to pilot that constitution in accordance to international law. And how do we all do that? We all send a copy of it to the United Nations Charter members, which is the Secretary, in accordance to Article 102, okay? That's how you put your state on the record, okay? Let's move on. Alright, so finally, we can start getting into the Act of Algesiras of 1906, Chapter 6, right? Took us quite a while to get through Chapter 5. We have to really dive in deep, especially start learning about Article 102, right? Of Chapter 5, because it talked about Moors Subjects. It talked about jurisdictions. It talked about a lot of things, right? But now we're getting into now Chapter 6. Chapter 6 is now diving back into economic liberty without any inequality. That's what Chapter 6 is all about, right? Now we're talking about collecting taxes and now governing over all the affairs of our own Moors State, alright? This is governance. This is what Moors have to learn how to do, okay? So what are we going over today, alright? So here we go. We have the Act of Algesiras of 1906, Chapter 6, Articles 105 to 119. It's about a declaration relative to public services and public works. And all this is about what? The triple principle. Now we're getting further into economic liberty without any inequality. So what's the first principle, right? Sovereignty and independence. What's that? Statehood. We need a state. We need a state constitution. What's the second principle? Integrity of domains. And that's what we're doing right now. How do you maintain integrity of domains? Through your legislation and through your courts, right? You're enforcing that. Last but not least, economic liberty without any inequality, okay? Now we're doing what? In Chapter 6, we'll start talking about public services and public works because we're maintaining the integrity of our domains, right? And how do we enforce this? Through Constable Court. We enforce it through Moroccan legislation and Constable Court, okay? Alright, so let's go ahead and get into this. Uh, this is Articles 105 through 119. And like I said, um, this is the Act of Algesiras, alright? So let's go ahead and get started. Okay, Mother? Alright, from the top.
Chapter 6, A Declaration Relative to Public Services and Public Works.
Pause. Okay, so as the Moors already know, you always start off with the title. You never just read past the title. The title tells you everything, right? So let's go ahead and get a breakdown of the title. What are we about to study? It's about a declaration relative to public services and public works. But what's public services and public works? Now, we understand the basic understanding of it, right? Let's get into a little bit more detail, right? At least we have a basic fundamental understanding of what we're referencing, okay? So let's, uh, let's go ahead and get a basic definition of public services and some of the themes that it covers, okay, Mother?
Public services. The term "public services" often includes legislators, courts, law enforcement officers, tax commissioners, education, electricity, emergency services, environmental protection, healthcare, mail, military, public buildings, public libraries, public parks, public school policy, public utilities, public transportation, social services, state schools, telecommunications, transportation, infrastructure, urban planning, waste management, water supply networks, etc.
Alright, so that's public services, right? So let's get into now public works. What is public works all about? Okay, Mother?
Public works. Public works means a project consisting of the construction, repair, renovation, or maintenance of public buildings, structures, sewers, waterworks, roads, bridges, docks, and underpasses, and viaducts, as well as any other improvement to be constructed, whole, repaired, or renovated, or maintained on public property, to be paid in whole or in part with public funds, or with financing to be retired with public funds in the form of lease agreements or otherwise.
Alright.
Public works means the operation, erection, construction, alteration, improvement, maintenance. Public works means the infrastructure improvements, the acquisition by purchase or condemnation of real and personal property within the tax incremental district, and the sale, lease, or other disposition of such property to private individuals, partnerships, corporations, or other entities at a price less than the cost of such acquisition, which benefit or further the health, safety, welfare, and economic development of accounting and project costs. Public works means building, altering, repairing, improving, or demolishing any public structure or facility constructed or acquired by a constructing unit to house local government functions, or provide water, waste disposal, power, transportation, and other public infrastructures. Public works means all fixed works constructed by any public body other than work done directly by any public utility company, whether or not done under public supervision or direction, or paid for wholly or in part out of public funds. Public works as defined herein includes all projects financed in whole or in part with bonds issued under the state. Public works means, all, means, A, all production, storage, transmission, and recovery facilities for water, sewerage, telephone, and other similar utilities owned or operated by any public agency or by any utility subject to the jurisdiction of the Public Utilities Commission except for energy facilities. B, all public transportation facilities, including streets, roads, highways, public parking lots, and structures, ports, harbors, airports, railroads, and mass transit facilities and stations, bridges, trolley wires, and other related facilities. And C, all publicly financed recreational facilities, all projects of the state coastal conservancy, and any development by a special district. Public works means all fixed works constructed by any public body other than work done directly by any public utility company, whether or not done under public supervision or direction, or paid for wholly or in part out of public funds. Public works as defined herein includes all projects financed in whole or in part with bonds issued under the state, and all projects financed in whole or in part with loans or other funds. Public works also includes all projects financed in whole or in part with funds from the State Finance Act, funds for school construction under Section 5 of the General Obligation Bond Act, funds authorized under Section 3 of the School Construction Bond Act, funds for school infrastructure under Section 6Z to 45 of the State Finance Act, and funds for transportation purposes under Section 4 of the General Obligation Bond Act, etc.
Alright, thank you, Mother. That was a lot of reading. So we get the basic understanding, basic understanding of what Chapter 6 is all about. So what is Chapter 6 about in terms of Moors? A lot of responsibility. That's exactly what it's about. See, the Moors have been totally, how can I say it? Consumed with just dealing with police, taxes, child support. But we have forgotten, if in fact, we want to enforce our sovereign rights, that means we also have to understand all the obligations that comes along with sovereignty. We are now obligated to protect the infrastructure of Morocco. We have to take care of our house. We have to make sure we clean our house. We gotta take care of our house. We're responsible for our house. We're responsible for the infrastructure bill of Morocco. And who's going to govern it? Thus the reason why we need competent Moors State Governments to set up structure, to set up accountability, to set up processes. We need standards. And we need to be held to the accountability of those standards. We must be competent Moors. We have to stop worrying about the minute things such as speeding tickets. That's the least of our concerns. What should we be worried about? How are we going to govern over 328 million citizens of the United States? Along with the infrastructure of Morocco? That's what we should be focusing in on, which means we gotta learn how to effectively communicate with each other while we sit in these offices of our government. The reason why I went to that list was it was a very short list of public services and public works, very short list, is to understand that this is serious business. We have to get into this and start understanding what are our obligations to our own homeland, alright? So if we start to get into Chapter 6, one of the things that we quickly have to assess is that in order to do this, to now return to Morocco and start to govern our sovereignty is, we gotta work together. We got a lot of work to do, alright? So who's going to do a lot of this work? Now, in Chapter 6, you gotta pay close attention to what I'm going to talk about today. A lot of Moors under the impression that we're just gonna put all the colonists out of Morocco, because why? Because we got pain, and we want revenge, and we gotta stop thinking like this. We gotta get back to the concept of the treaty. What's the treaty about? The treaty says what? Treaty of Peace and Friendship. Treaties are about what? They're contracts based solely on what, for the most part? Amity and Commerce. Amity and Commerce. What does amity mean? Tranquility, friendship. We have to find a way to now finish the works of Sidi Mohamed. Sidi Mohamed recognized the United States of America. Why? He saw them as an asset. He saw them as tenants in Morocco to pay him rent, to pay him taxes, to give him what? Terrace. Terrace is taxes, duties. We gotta get back in the mindset of how are we going to manage our land in a very short period of time? How do we scale up? How do we scale up quickly? That way we maintain self-governance of our land. How do we do that? We're getting what? We don't need to reinvent the wheel. We need to learn how to manage the wheel. What wheel? This conveyor belt that the United States has put together, that they commonly call their municipal corporation. The United States is one large corporation. And guess who gets to manage it? Competent Moors States. We'll talk about that today, okay? So what's happening? Okay, let's get into this. Article 105, Mother, please.
With a view to assuring the application of the principle of economic liberty without any inequality, the Signatory Powers declare that none of the public services in the Sharifian Empire can be alienated for the advantage of private interests.
Okay, we're gonna pause right there. Now, ordinarily, I would have Mother read the first five parts, but we're not going to do that today. First, we gotta get the proper mindset before we dive into these articles, right? What's the mindset we should have? Okay, Article 105 tells you just about everything you need to know, okay? Article 105, with a view to assuring the application of the principle of economic liberty without any inequality. So where did we learn about economic liberty without any inequality? That's one of our triple principles, right? That's the last triple principle. We're getting to now managing the treasury and all the public services and public works in Morocco, okay? But how do we go about doing that? Well, we're enforcing the treaty provisions, okay? It's about, so therefore, the Signatory Powers declare. So who's the Signatory Powers? The United States of America. Who else? The United States, international organization, right? Two separate entities. So the United States of America signed off on this treaty. But guess who else agreed to the terms and conditions of this contract? The United States, international organization. That must be understood. They're bound to it as well, because in August 3rd, 1906, the United States agreed to their terms and conditions, because they ratified it through their international organization to make themselves bound to these provisions. Okay, so the Signatory Powers, which is the United States of America and the United States, declare that none of the public services in the Moors Empire can be alienated for the advantage of private interests. So who's the private interest? The United States, international organization. Because the United States is a corporation, right? By their own legislation, of what? The Act of Congress of 1871 says they are a municipal corporation. And all of them take their oath to the Constitution of the United States. But they do not take their oath to the Constitution of the United States of America. They all take their oath to a corporation. And through that corporation, they have set up what? Okay, listen. What have they set up? All of these so-called states, but they're not states. What are they? They're charter colonies, right? They're all franchisees of the franchise store coming on to the United States. So all of these names you see down here on this map is an overlay, right? Like artificial turkeys over top of your natural organic soil. So all of these are nothing but entities, subsidiaries of the United States. They're nothing but a bunch of LLCs, okay? So you're looking at 50 LLCs. That's including Alaska and Hawaii as a name. Don't get me wrong, the indigenous people Hawaii are giving pushback. They're saying, no, we're not Americans. They're letting everybody know. So when I mention the word Hawaii, I'm not talking about the indigenous people. I'm talking about the municipal corporation. And international law is known as an organ of an international organization, sometimes referred to as a constituent chartered state. We're learning about that today. Why am I going into this? Okay, listen. All these corporations are where?
In Morocco.
In Morocco, right? This is the soil, okay? And this, all the corporations doing business in Morocco. And none of these businesses can do what? According to Article 105. Let's go back to it. None of those businesses can alienate, right? It can be, let's start right here. The Signatory Powers. Who's the Signatory Powers? All of the 50 so-called states. But they're not states. They're what? Charter colonies, or organs of an international organization, or a constituent chartered state. We're learning about that. So the Signatory Powers declare, so they've already agreed, that none of the public services in the Moors Empire can be alienated for the advantage of their private interest. So what's their private interest? Let's go back to it. This is their private interest. So they can't do anything to do what? Violate our public services of our organic Moors States. They've already declared, they've already agreed, they already have resolved in this contract. Why is this important to understand? Okay, let's now get into it. Okay, Mother? Let's start with Article 105, and we're gonna read all the way through Article 109, okay?
Article 105, with a view to assuring the application of the principle of economic liberty without any inequality, the Signatory Powers declare that none of the public services in the Sharifian Empire can be alienated for the advantage of private interests. Article 106, in case the Sharifian Government should invoke the aid of foreign capital or foreign industry for the working of public services, or for the operation of public works, roads, railways, ports, telegraphs, and other public works, the Signatory Powers reserve to themselves the right to see to it that the authority of the state over these great enterprises of general interest remains entire. Article 107, the validity of the concessions which may be made under the terms of Article 106, as well as for government supplies shall throughout the Sharifian Empire be subordinated to the principle of public awards on proposals without preference of nationality whenever applicable under the rules followed in foreign laws. Article 108, as soon as the Sharifian Government shall have decided to invite proposals for execution of public works, it shall so inform the diplomatic body, it shall later communicate to it the plans, specifications, and all documents annexed to the call for proposals in order to enable the nationals of all the Signatory Powers to form a clear idea of the contemplated works and compete for the same. A sufficient term for this shall be specified in the call for proposals. Article 109, the specifications shall not contain either directly or indirectly any condition or provision which may be prejudicial to free competition and which may give advantage to competitors of one nationality over those of another nationality.
Okay, thank you, Mother. Let's go back and recap. This is very powerful information, Moors. You gotta really pay attention to what's going on. Okay, so we already know we're talking about Chapter 6, the Declaration Relative to Public Services and Public Works. We took a quick snapshot of what public services and public works is about, right? A very, very short list of information, okay? Now we're learning now, Article 105, with a view to assuring the application of the principle of economic liberty without any inequality, the Signatory Powers declare that none of the public services in the Sharifian Empire can be alienated for the advantage of private interests. So it's nothing the United States can do to prejudice or try to prohibit Moors from enforcing public services. Now, keep in mind, what was one of the themes on the list of public services? Let's take a look at it. It's a quick snapshot. What was one of the themes in public services? Public services, legislation. So they can't do what? Anything to prohibit our legislation. They declare that they can't do anything to alienate our courts, our law enforcement officers, or taxes. They can't do nothing about education, electricity, emergency services, environmental protections, healthcare, mail, military, public buildings, public libraries, public parks, public policy, public utilities, public transportation, social services, state schools, telecommunications, transportation, infrastructure, urban planning, waste management, water supply, network, etc. It's a quick snapshot, just a few things. But what's most important here that Moors should immediately assess to? Public services. It's about legislation, courts, law enforcement officers, taxes, etc. You see that? Okay, let's go back to the treaty. So public services, right? So the Signatory Powers declare that none of the public services in the Sharifian Empire can be alienated for the advantage of private interests. Meaning, private interests cannot supersede the Moors Governments. Where? In the empire. Where is the empire? Okay, let's take a look at it. Where is the empire? There you go. That's the empire. So all these privatized corporations are doing business in Morocco, and it can't alienate our public services or our public works. We control everything. Okay, well, what about controlling? Okay, let's go back to the treaty. We gotta learn about this, Moors. Listen to what the treaty says, Moors. You gotta really pay attention. Article 106, in case the Sharifian Government, in case the Moors Government, should invoke the aid of foreign capital or foreign industry for the working of public services, or for the operations of public works, roads, railways, ports, telegraphs, and other public works, etc., the Signatory Powers reserve to themselves the right to see it that the authority of the state over these great enterprises of the general interest remains entire. So what's happening? In Article 106, our obligation, listen, in case the Moors Empire or Moors Government should invoke the aid of a foreign capital- or Moors government should invoke the aid of a foreign capital, if we use their Federal Reserve notes, or if we use their foreign industry, what's their foreign industry? All their fifty states are corporations, if we use their corporation. I need the Moors to start looking at this on a macro level. Who are their foreign corporations? Let's go back to it, let's look at the visual. These are foreign industry, right here. The state of Colorado, as example. Is a foreign industry. I.e. corporation. The Moors in each of the territories have to learn how to control this municipal corporation, this foreign industry. That right now, this foreign industry is overseeing all the public services and all the public works in Morocco. We as Moors have to learn how to govern that corporation. Because they're already doing all the work, as if they're a widget. Right? They're doing all the work, they've set up all the processes. They're collecting all the taxes. They're taking care of the roads. Our job is to govern what they do. This must be the mindset of Moors. How do we come in overnight and take over our jurisdiction? We must still maintain the human rights of all of their citizens as well as our Moors nationals. How can you protect their human rights? You just oversee the foreign industry that's taking place in Morocco. Let's read again. In case the Sharifian government should invoke the aid of foreign capital or foreign industry for the working of public services or for the working of public works. So we can invoke, right? See the word, should we invoke their aid? That's what the treaty says, we can invoke their aid. What does that mean? We invoke it through our Moroccan law system, now we govern your corporation. Your corporation is now what? A registered foreign corporation doing business in our jurisdiction. So the state of Colorado, let's go back to it, Moors gotta get this understanding before we go any further. The state of Colorado is a foreign entity in Morocco. And it is doing business, and what's commonly known as this latitude longitude right here, that's now known as ADPAC, acronym. And ADPAC, as an example, has the obligation to govern that corporation that's doing business and maintaining the public works and public services in our jurisdiction. So we can invoke, invoke their aid. Let's go back to the treaty. Article one oh six. In case the Sharifian government should invoke the aid of foreign capital or foreign industry for the working of public services or for the operation of public works, roads, railways, ports, telegraphs, and other public works, the signatory powers reserve to themselves the right to see it that they, that the authority of the state over these great enterprises of general interest remains entire. Who's the state, Moors? You see the capital S? State. The state is ADPAC. Who's the state? It's gonna end up being your utipasidus jurisdiction of your modern organic state. And foreigners who've been doing business in Morocco have to maintain this great enterprise, they've been maintaining, they gotta maintain it, and it must remain entire. The Moors government oversees the great enterprises in Morocco, and the great enterprises have to remain entire. Why do they remain entire? Only if we do what? Only if we invoke their aid. This is what's in the treaty. We have to get the understanding, Moors, before we go any further. We can invoke the aid of each one of these corporations to maintain what they've been doing. Because they have a great enterprise they have set up. It's our job as the state with a capital S to oversee this great enterprise and maintain everything, right? Go back to the treaty. The state. The authority of the state, what state? Moors state. Oversees what? Over these great enterprises of the general interest remains entire, entire, one hundred percent. Only if we invoke their assistance. This is how Moors self-govern overnight. We have to learn how to govern their enterprises. They are an entity, a subsidiary in Morocco. Let's go back. Okay. Wait, mother.
So entire means the way it's been running?
Yes.
We don't wanna interrupt services.
Correct.
And also, um, so each of these corporations has a financial arm. And we need to teach them, we no longer doing double dealing books.
Well, yes. Yeah, we gotta make, based upon what? Regulations.
Right, regulation, legislation.
Legislation, right? Based upon the customs in the empire, right? That's Article four. See how Article four is now coming into play? What was, what, excuse me, what was Chapter four of the Act of Odysseus of nineteen oh six about? It's about what? Regulations concerning the customs of the empire and the repression of fraud and smuggling. So we must repress the fraud by bringing back the customs. How do you bring back the customs? Through legislation. Okay? All right, let's get into this. So who right now oversees a lot of what's going on as it relates to public works and public utilities? Well, the United States International Organization has a corporation commonly known as U dot S dot General Service Administration called GSA. They hand out a lot of contracts, no-bid contracts, some contracts you bid on, right? They take care of a lot of things in Morocco, right? Who else takes care of a lot of infrastructure? Well, let's go back to the map, just a second, let's go back to the map. As it relates to this jurisdiction commonly known as ADPAC, Colorado is a corporation, just like the United States, right? Colorado, as an example. Here's the constitution of the state of Colorado. Okay? Here's their constitution. Before we go into it, what really is this? What is this? Even though it says constitution of the state of Colorado, what is it really? Okay, let's go into the definition. It's a charter. Remember, we went over this definition, let's recap, right? Let's be redundant, let's be repetitive. We're learning, right? Mother, definition of charter.
Charter, noun. An instrument emanating from the sovereign power in the nature of a grant, either to the whole nation, or to a class, or portion of the people, or to a colony or dependency, and assuring to them certain rights, liberties, or powers. Such was the great charter, charter or Magna Carta, and such also were the charters granted to certain of the English colonies in America.
Okay, pause right there, so a charter, a charter was granted to certain of the English colonies in America. Right? But we all know they're really where? In Morocco. Right? But what's happening here? Okay, let's go back. Definition of charter, very important, Moors. You gotta really keep up with me this time as it relates to how we're going to govern them. Well, what is it them? What's the them? They are charters, corporations, municipalities. And according to international law, they are organs of an international organization and commonly known as a constituent charter. Chartered state, okay? So charter, an instrument emanating from the sovereign power. So how did they end up with a charter? Who'd they get the charter from? The United States. Cause they're a franchisee of the franchisor. And how did the United States come to be? Well, who was the sovereign over them? The United States of America set up the United States in eighteen seventy-one. And after eighteen seventy-one, the United States International Organization, commonly known as a municipal corporation, set up all this infrastructure commonly known as the fifty states, right? The fifty states. That's what the United States set up, okay? Follow me so far? Okay, let's get back into this. So a charter is a nature of a grant, so it was granted to them, a charter. Where's the charter? Constitution, we gonna learn about that. A constitution for who? A colony. And that colony is in a dependency status. Who is a colony dependent upon? Well, the first colony status is dependent upon who? The United States International Organization as its franchisor. And the United States International Organization is dependent upon who? Who is the United States dependent upon? The United States of America. Well, who's the United States of America dependent upon? The sovereign power of Morocco, the empire. So the empire is the sovereign power, that Sidi Mohamed allowed the thirteen colonies some dominion in Morocco. So the true sovereign power is the empire of Morocco. Sometimes known as the Moors Empire. So the Moors Empire allowed the United States of America to exist. Then the United States of America set up the United States in eighteen seventy-one. The United States set up fifty different districts, trust territories, commonly known as the States of, all caps. But they're not states, they use the word state. But they know that they're not states, that's why every time they spell it, they spell it with a lowercase s. Okay? So what's happening? Let's get into this charter as a repression. We gotta really understand what's happening, what are they doing with this word state? Okay. All right. So this is Black Law Dictionary, fourth edition, keep that in mind, Moors. Okay, mother, right here.
A charter differs from a constitution in that the former is granted by the sovereign, while the latter is established by the people themselves.
Okay, so we gotta read this backwards, right? Let's read it forward to back, then back to forward, right? A charter differs from a constitution. A charter differs from a constitution. Then they break it down, they tell you what's happening. And that the former is granted by the sovereign, while the latter is established by the people themselves, right? So let's read it backwards. So the people, the human beings, set up what? Constitution. Okay? And when the constitution is established, now what happens? Now the constitution can set up a charter. So only human beings can set up a constitution, and then the human beings through the constitution can set up any charters they want. As many charters as they want. But the charter doesn't come before constitution. So let's read it again. A charter differs from a constitution, and that the former is granted by the sovereign. So what's the former when they're reading it? Who's former? Who's former? Who's the former?
The charter.
The charter's former, right? So, and that the former is granted by the sovereign. So the charter is granted by the sovereign. The charter is granted by the sovereigns, right? Right? While the latter, who's the latter? The constitution, the people. The latter is established by the people themselves. So the people set up the constitution, and the constitution can then set up a charter, cause the charter is granted by the people. The human beings of the constitution. But then it gets deeper, okay? Mother, highlight it.
An act of a legislature creating a corporation or creating and defining the franchise of a corporation.
All right. So, an act, a charter is an act of legislation. An act of legislator creating a corporation. Or creating and defining the franchise of a corporation. So who, so what happened? The legislator set up what? This. And all these are corporations. Where? In Morocco, right? So an act of legislator creating, so they, an act of legislation created what? The United States municipal corporation. And the United States now has set forth additional charters, okay?
For each state, for each.
Each territory.
Territory.
Mm-hmm. Or creating, defining the franchise of a corporation, right? Let's keep reading. Next session, move.
That is to say, the articles of a corporation taking in connection with the law under which the corporation was organized.
Mm-hmm, so the corporation was organized. The United States is a corporation that's organized, that set up fifty different trust territories that are also an extension of franchisees of the franchisor. Okay, here we go.
A contract between the state and the corporation. Between the corporation and the stockholders, and between the stockholders and the state.
All right, so here's where Moors have to really pay attention. Here's what's advantageous for us as Moors states. Listen. So we're talking charter. A contract between the state and the corporation. So therefore, our Moors states can contract with their corporation. Our organic state can contract with their corporation. Cause that corporation is a charter. That must be understood. We have to learn how to govern over all these charters. All these corporations. In order to maintain what? Public services, public works for all of the human beings living in Morocco. That is our job to protect the citizens of the United States of America, that's what the treaty's about. We're supposed to be protecting them. Well, how do we do that? We have to learn how to govern their great enterprise. That is our obligation. Who set this up? Sidi Mohamed. Who was the last Sultan that was overseeing this great enterprise? Mohammed the Fifth. So Mohammed the Fifth stepped down as Sultan in nineteen fifty-six. More specifically, March second nineteen fifty-six, he stepped down as being Sultan. Sidi Mohamed was the first, and Mohammed the Fifth was the last Sultan in Morocco. And we need to finish what they started. Keep in mind that all the Sultans were overseeing the Moors Empire. The Sultans were not Moors. I'll say it again, the Sultans were not Moors. What were they?
Arabs.
They were Arabs, they'll tell you that. Right? They speak Arabic, Arabic. They're Arabs. You gotta go back and look at the history. The Ottoman Empire colonized the Moors. So the Sultans are sitting in the chairs of the office of the Moors Empire. They were governing on behalf of our empire. Where's our empire? In Enterprise. They were overseeing the treasury. Go back and look at the Kingdom of Morocco constitution of the year twenty eleven. And you will see, they point out two different type of legal personalities in their constitution. They identify themselves as being the Arabs, and they identify the indigenous people as being the Mazi people, the Mazi of the indigenous, they pointed out in their constitution. They say they're Moroccans in Morocco. I have no problem with that, cause we're all family, right? What is my point? That the Arabs who call themselves Moroccans today are overseeing the great enterprise of the Moors Empire. And guess who else is overseeing it? The United States. The United States is overseeing the great enterprise of Morocco. They're governing over it. So what needs to happen now? Now that we're restoring our states, and now our job to govern over the affairs of our own great enterprise. Because what is the United States utilizing? Our resources, our land. You want to understand this, Moors? Their corporation is utilizing all of our resources. What's the number one resource? Land. What's the second resource? People. All the movable and immovable property. They're overseeing it, no different than the Sultan was. We have to learn how to govern the affairs of these corporations. Let's continue studying. Constitution of State of Colorado. This constitution is what? A charter. We're gonna learn more about that. I need all the Moors out there who watch EDPAC study session to go and look up the constitution in their territory. Go look up the state of Oregon, look up the state of Georgia, look up the state of Mississippi, look at the state of New York. Go and look up their constitution, it's gonna have similar language. Okay, this is a charter. Okay, and they're pretty able to say, we the people of Colorado with profound reverence for the supreme ruler of the universe, in order to form a more independent and perfect government, establish justice, ensure tranquility, provide for economic defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our prosperity, pos- pos- yeah, pos- prosperity, do ordain and establish this constitution for the state of Colorado. They put their own state of Colorado in quotes. Well, look what they did, they put a capital S. This is why they put it in quotes to say, eh, it's really not a state. So for those who know the truth, that's why they put it in quotes. I didn't, I didn't do this to them, this is their constitution. They put the state of Colorado in quotes, okay? Now let the Moors see this. State of Colorado in quotes, because they know they're not supposed to be putting a capital S on it. They know this. Okay, let's continue studying, listen. Now let's go down to find out, who do they pledge their allegiance to? Okay, let's go down to now, their Article Two. See that Article Two, Bill of Rights. Now this is state of Colorado's constitution, okay? Now we're gonna go down to Article Two, Section Two, listen. Section Two. People may alter or abolish form of government, proviso, the people of this state. Look, see the S? Wait a minute. I thought y'all just had a capital S. Why y'all got a lowercase s now? Oh, see, they know the difference. See? Who are they fooling in the title? Their citizens. When their citizens read the title, they get hypnotized and say, oh, capital S, it's organic state. But they don't go down and read the rest of provisions, do they? Because people skim, they don't read. Read means to comprehend. It means to use discernment, and use, means to use forensics. And what's forensics tell you? Smallcase s. Listen. This is what all the Moors have to do. Go back and look at their charter constitutions. Okay, let's, let's get back into this reading. I know it's small, Moors, okay? Let's start from top. Section Two. People may alter or abolish form of government, proviso, the people of this state, lowercase s, meaning they know it's a charter, have the sole and exclusive right of governing themselves as a free, sovereign, and independent state, lowercase s, and to alter and abolish their constitution, lowercase c, and form a government whenever they may deem it necessary to their safety and happiness, provided, listen, such change be not repugnant to the Constitution of the United States. Not the United States of America. The United States, and what is the United States? A municipal corporation. Right? So who are they bound to? The Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the United States is a charter. Municipal corporation. It was granted a charter by who? Their sovereign, and who's the United States sovereign? The United States of America. Who's the United States of America sovereign? The empire of Morocco, i.e. the Moorish governments, right? Okay, let's, let's go down further. Okay, watch this. Listen, we're talking about charters, right? Okay, now you come on down. Listen to this. This is, this is still chapter two, right? Under their Bill of Rights, this is their constitution. I'm gonna start it right here. On the state's rights, lowercase s, on the state's right to require the production of corporate papers of a state-chartered corporation, pursuant to the legislative investigation to determine if a state, lowercase s, policy concerning seditionary activities have been violated, not impaired by the Smith Act. What's my point here? You see what they call themselves? This is in their constitution. State-chartered corporation. Moors gotta understand this. So what is a charter? Hold up. A charter is what? Where's a charter? A charter is a colony or dependency to who? The sovereign power. Through what? An instrument. See the word instrument? Let's go back to their, their constitution. Okay, here we go. All right. Let's start here. On the state's right to require the production of a corporate papers. What's the corporate papers? What is corporate papers? Instruments. Proper written instrument. See, let's start over. On the state's right to require the production of corporate papers of a state-chartered corporation, pursuant to legislative investigation to determine if a state policy concerning seditionary, seditionary activities have been violated, not impaired by the Smith Act. That's what Moors gotta understand. That even they say they are a state-chartered corporation. They have what? Corporate papers, and what's the corporate papers? The constitution. Their constitution is the corporate papers. It's the emanating document allows them to do business in Morocco under the umbrella of who? The United States, okay? Let's go back up. They tell you who? They said it can't do nothing repugnant to who? They said, yeah, citizens can do whatever they want to do. Long as what? Such change be not repugnant to the Constitution of the United States. Not the United States of America. Right? Okay, listen, Moors. Definition of American. Black Law Dictionary. Okay, American, Moors.
Pertaining to the Western Hemisphere, or in a more restricted sense, to the United States.
Stop. Black Law Dictionary, they wrote it. Listen to what they're saying. American pertaining to the Western Hemisphere, or, now listen to how they talk. In a more restricted sense. In a strict sense. To the United States. So Americans, or America, is restricted to the United States. Not the United States of America. You see how they're writing? But most people read right past that, oh, they mean the United States of America. No, that's not what they mean. This is a Black Law Dictionary defining words, statuses, legal personalities, political statuses. Now if you understand, going back to the constitution of the charter, commonly known as the state of Colorado, they say you can't do nothing repugnant to the Constitution of the United States. Right? Treaty of Montevideo nineteen thirty three. Why are we looking at this up? We can already talk about the word state and the word population. Treaty of Montevideo nineteen thirty three, which is about the convention on the rights and duties of what? States, capital S, right? So Article One is about what? The state, keep in mind, they got a lowercase s right here. Why they got a lowercase s there? Because the United States of America was the first to enact this treaty amongst the who? American states. Because they know America's a corporation. So when they wrote this treaty in nineteen thirty three, they were very careful to make sure they kept putting the word state in a lowercase s. But let's look what they say about states. Article One. The state as a person of international law should possess the following qualifications, a permanent population. Guess what? If you need a permanent population as step one, in order to have a state according to international law, according to international law, you have to have a state. And your states, part one A says, you must have a permanent population. But guess what? If you go back to the Black Law Dictionary, you will not find the definition of the word population. I've looked in the Black Law Dictionary in additions one all the way through nine, and you won't find the word population. Why is that? Why can't you find the word population? This all will make sense to you, Moors. How is it that the United States enacted this treaty? And they turn around and say, well, you gotta have a state, and according to international law. And according to your state, you better have a permanent population. But yet, the United States turn around and don't define the word population in the Black Law Dictionary. Why is that?
Because they don't want you to have one.
Because they don't have a population. Why? I'll tell you why, listen. Because Colorado says, they took an oath to who? The Constitution of the United States, and the United States is a municipal corporation. And a corporation can't claim to have human beings as citizens. Who can have citizens or nationals? Only organic states or organic people. So therefore, the Black Law Dictionary does not define the word population, because they will be trying to define the word population in Black Law Dictionary. They have to say almost the word what? Human beings. And they don't want to define the word population, because they get set up for a tort claim, because their own citizens would end up suing the United States for what? Fraud. So the United States stays away from the definition of population. They don't want to define it in law. Because population according to what? Let's go back to it. Population is defined by what? International law. And international law says you have to be a human being in order to have rights. Because it's called just cogits. The peripery norms of international law, just cogits. Just cogits means human rights. And the United States knows that they're what? A corporation. State of Colorado knows it's what? A corporation. So they stay away from trying to define the word population, because they're what? A corporation. Walmart has employees. For Walmart's a corporation. But you'll never catch Walmart or Amazon saying they got citizens. They can't do it. That violates international law. No corporation can claim that they have citizens as their population. They can say they have employees. They can say they got charters. They can say they got LLCs, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, i.e. artificial persons. So I ask all the Moors, please go to Black Law Dictionary and try to find the word population. Why is this important to understand? Okay, let's go back to it. There's no population in the United States. Why? They're all artificial persons. Who's the first artificial person as an example? Colorado. And Colorado's claiming to have citizens, but they don't have citizens, you know what they got? Artificial persons. Because all their so-called citizens have signed on to an oath under what they call naturalized persons. And all naturalized persons come under what? The Act of Al-Sara, excuse me, the, the, uh, Act of Congress eighteen seventy one. So all the citizens came under the Act, right? The Act of eighteen seventy one. And the Act of eighteen seventy one, Act of Congress, was a corporation. They put all their citizens underneath a corporation. Go back and listen to any president, any of their legislators, anybody in the Senate, watch them take their oath to who? The United States. Corporation. All the citizens of this corporation are in a status what you call civiliter mortus. They're all civilly dead. They're not human beings. They walk around as human beings. It's what you call the walking dead. All the citizens of the United States are the walking dead. Why do I say that? Because they're dead on paper. All their names is in all caps. They're civiliter mortus. They're mortus. Mortus means dead, like a mortuary. Names in all caps. So they're the walking dead. What does this mean for Moors? Now we have to learn how to govern over these corporations of all these civiliter mortus persons. Because they're all corporations. Their so-called state is a corporation, and all their so-called citizens are nothing but artificial persons. Remember what I told you? Their statutes say, when they miss the word person as a standalone word, it means artificial, automatically, in their statutes. If they don't put the word human in front of the words person, they don't say human person. Human person means human being. If they just say person, artificial. Why is this important for Moors to understand? We have to learn how to govern over all these artificial persons. Who's an artificial person? Colorado. Who's an artificial person? Texas. Who's an artificial person? Washington, D.C. And any subsidiary underneath that is also an artificial person. So therefore, the United States, going back to Article one oh six of the Act of Al-Sara. Article one oh six. In the, in case the Sharifian government should invoke the aid of foreign capital or foreign industry for the working of public services or for the operation of public works, roads, railways, ports, telegraphs, and other public works, the signatory powers reserve to themselves the right to see that the authority of the state, organic state, capital S, organic state, over these great enterprises of the general interest remains entire. So the state is over, over these great enterprises. And who's the enterprises? Okay. These are the enterprises. And all their so-called citizens are also a part of the great enterprise, because all of them have been turned into LLCs. They're not human beings on paper. Because human beings can't be a citizen of a corporation. Things must be done in light manner. What's the light manner? A corporation can only do business with a corporation. We must control the great enterprise. This is what Sidi Mohammed set up. This is what Mohammed the Fifth left behind in nineteen fifty six. Got a question, Moors?
Yeah, so does that mean we have to become corporations?
No. I'm ready, I'll answer that question right now. That's a good question. I love the question. All right, so what's happening? How do, how do we fix this, Moors? Solutions, right? Every last state in Morocco. in Morocco, when we put together our states in Morocco, right? When we start to now govern over the affairs of the corporations, all the Moors states will have what? A national trust. Your national trust, what is, what's inside of a trust? Assets. Artificial assets. Such as patents, trademarks, charters, corporation names. So our trust will interface with other corporations, cause our trust was set up a municipal name that's an artificial person that can do business and contract with State of Colorado. So our, our Moors trust of our state. Okay, let, let's go to AIPAC's constitution, okay? AIPAC's constitution, we'll go down to the trust section, okay? That's Article Four. Okay, we go on, go on down. Okay, Article Four. Let's go on down as, as an example, okay, as an example. As an example. Our state constitution has a national trust. And through the national trust, we can interface with artificial persons. Cause the trust only holds what? Patents, trademarks. Right? So the AIPAC trust would do business with all other enterprises that are artificial persons. So we set up an artificial person through the trust. That way our organic, listen. Our organic state, what's the organic state, okay, let's go back up to it. That's the organic state right there. Right? The organic state of a Lordy Moors trade of I.T. Colorado, as an example. Is not doing business directly with State of Colorado. Who's doing business with the State of Colorado? The trustees over the national trust of our state is doing business with the other enterprises. Cause things must be done in light manner, our organic state can't do business with the franchise, with a corporation. We gotta set up a municipal corporation within our national trust to do business with their corporations. I.e. we gotta set up a shell. Our shell will do business with their shells. That must be understood, Moors. That's the answer to the test. The national trust, you must put everything in a trust. Okay, so as I, as I start to wrap up. Here's what we have to understand. This is the State of Colorado, one of their websites. And you notice up here it talks about State of Colorado Public Works, right? You see right here? Denver Public Works, you see? Denver Public Works. Right? Oh, he was at home. All of their municipal corporations, i.e. their charters, i.e. their constituent state charters, all have public works. They're already maintaining this great enterprise. What do we do? We come in and govern the public works that they already have set up. We don't have to reinvent the wheel, Moors. We have to learn how to govern the, the wheel. Where did they learn how to govern from us as Moors? They came into an enterprise and then they colonized. And now we have to restore our states and then learn once again how to govern the enterprise. But it's already got the great enterprise at work. And who needs to oversee it, your treaty tells you, as I start to wrap up. The authority of the state, what state? Moors state, organic state, over these great enterprises of the general interest remains entire. Why? Only if we do what? Okay, go back up top. Only if we do what? Involve the aid of, of foreign capital or invoke the aid of foreign industry for the working of public services or for the operation of public works, you see that? We got options. It's good to have our options, right? Because we can, we are responsible, listen to me, Moors, as I start to wrap up. We are responsible for the well-being of all human beings that live in Morocco. There's three hundred and twenty-eight registered people in Morocco. And we're responsible for them because of these treaties, we want to enforce treaties, then we better learn how to do what? Govern over the great enterprise. I am with that, Islam.